Alderman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky. Alderman Woods.
Here. We have a quorum. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the August 12th, 2021, planning a zoning.
It's a move.
Second.
Any questions, corrections? Mayor, please.
Take the mayor first.
Well, I saw him first. I'm sorry. I caught you out of the...
There was one change. I already told Eileen. It said motion failed, but actually motion passed.
Okay. You had the same thing?
Is your mic on?
I'm gonna let Sonny tell me.
Actually, Nadine is the one that caught it.
Nadine caught it? All right.
I don't want to take your credit.
Credit Nadine.
Mic check, mic check. Everybody have their mics on? Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, that passes. Next, report and recommendation and ordinance amending the city's sign regulations in Chapter 13 of the City Code to allow off-premise billboard signs in the city limits. Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Chairman Woods. So, just a brief recap. This item went to CDC back in March, came to PZB, and then it was tabled for more information. We're kind of at that point now with more information. The applicants are with us this evening. I think just from my standpoint, I'd kind of break this request down to like three key components. One being the text amendment, which obviously is amending the code to allow one such community landmark sign specifies the height, the true one location, because that's something we discussed at the last PZB meeting. And I know City Attorney Bond's been reviewing that with the applicant. So, the text amendment is kind of one aspect of it, obviously to allow a community landmark sign, the one location at 950 North Illinois Route 83. The second being the financial component. So, what the applicant is proposing is a 20-year lease. There is a kind of a one-time impact fee of $20,000, and then the term of the lease, which is proposed at a 20-year lease, kind of averaging at around $18,564 a year. So, that's kind of a second component. And then the third component is the actual sign itself. The applicant has diligently put together five different options that are in the packet. I think it's probably prudent, this, in the text amendment, the permit will actually go back to Streetscape for their review. But I think it's probably a good idea just to have some discussion here this evening to see which is preferred or which is not preferred, because obviously seven is quite a number to choose from, which, you know, we appreciate the options. But I think if we can narrow that down, that would be helpful. And I'm sure Streetscape would appreciate that also. And then kind of the last part of that is the actual size of the sign and the height of the sign. So, those are the three components. And with that, I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Do the applicants want to make a presentation or say anything?
I believe they do. They have a presentation.
Go ahead. Yeah, you could go up there and just give us your name.
Thank you, Alderman. My name is John Simpson. I am counsel for the applicant. We do have a presentation on this behalf, and I just want to reemphasize, I know the titling goes back to how it was originally submitted to CDC. We put a lot of time and effort working with city council as well as development staff to try and find...Proliferation was the most common theme at CDC, PZB, and city council. So, we think we've done a very good job at narrowly tailoring this ordinance in a manner that will not allow proliferation and will condense this to one site. We also felt that it would be helpful to present you more options that are similar to the design elements that we see in front of City Hall. I know some of the agendas that you had received yesterday, some items were most recently submitted. We have provided a packet as well. I don't think there's any ill will or, you know, any type of misrepresentation on our end. I think everyone was trying to make the deadlines by Friday at four, and we submitted some of that on Friday as requested. So, if you see any difference, it's all stuff that we do have submitted, but maybe there might be a little bit of confusion there. So, I just want to make sure that we put that up in front of everyone. That being said, we are available for questions. If I remember, PZB, once we sit down, you guys kind of go in committee. So, I think it's probably prudent, given the two sides of agenda you have for today, is taking as little time as possible and opening up for questions. Mr. Degore is going to step up and kind of show you what we have in mind.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you again for the time. And I just want to reiterate again, we really took time doing our homework assignments, right? We wanted to collect the feedback from the prior CDC, PZB, and council meeting, okay? And we really wanted to make sure that we addressed everybody's concern. The, one of the things that I wanted to mention that was not in the prior packet, which is in this one, right, we were talking about getting in last minute, is the design component of it. I'll just spend two seconds on that. Because last time when we did present several designs to you, and you've seen most, and I will go back, I did want to just bring this to your attention, okay? Because we spent a lot of time talking about the aesthetics. Remember, this is the city's landmark sign as well. It's very much a partnership in this project. And what we did is we wanted to make sure we know, and Art, you know, this is kind of directed to you as well. I know there's a lot of time spent from the Streetscape Committee and your leadership around that. And a lot of the design elements that went into that are very well-known throughout the city and were very well-appreciated throughout the city. The architectural elements of this are very sleek, very modern, the black molding, the illumination effects. You see these all throughout your own city, right? And what we wanted to do is we wanted to harness what was already established in your branding of your city and complement that out on the outskirts, out on the expressway. So, what we did is we took those elements. Now, remember, this is one right out front here in terms of the LED screen, the identification, and even so far as to complementing some of the molding and illumination features. So, this is the concept we didn't show you before. We actually went back to the drawing board and added that in as, I believe, as a seventh option. Because remember prior, before I get into this, prior, the concept was, our initial proposal to you was taking a look at the physical landscape on where this installation, if afforded to do one, would be, right? We looked at that light maroon color of the overpasses, right? Welcome to Wooddale, welcome to Bensonville, right? You have those type of identifiers already on the overpasses as the new expressways being built. But in this case, I personally like this, and I think perhaps maybe the city may as well. So, what we did is we took the design elements from what you have there on your on-premise signs throughout the city with the black molding, the capatures up here, the logo here, which would end up being illuminated in the evening hours, kind of a very soft outline of the logo of the leaf, going so far as even this line underneath there, which would serve as a molding piece, would be able to kind of be lightly illuminated as well, as well as the city of Wooddale. So, we really wanted to make sure that it had that feel of what it would be out on...Now, remember, everything that we do, and everything we do across the country, is conducive to that particular landscape on where you are, right? So, if, for instance, your clock tower, that's conducive to that landscape. It fits, it works, it looks great at that intersection, right? The signs you have outside of this building, it's small, it's conducive, it fits, right? For a superhighway, something like this, we can complement architectural features, but from a size and scope standpoint, it's fits, it's conducive to that environment. So, I just wanted to end the, call it aesthetic portion of the conversation around what this thing might look like as you were coming in and out of the city. One thing to note, too, from a design standpoint, because I'm kind of an architectural kind of guy, is along the expressway, you'll have what we call transient commuters as well, right? You'll have those people, those commuters, that are coming in and out, going back and forth to the airport, that may not live in the city of Wooddale, right? That may not know they're passing through the city of Wooddale, right? So, number one, regardless of what this would look like, this was sure as heck being identifier for the city, right? But then there's those people, like everybody here in this room, that live in the city, that know the architecture means something, that know the architecture complements something that's already within the inner parts of your city. And that's what we were trying to accomplish. This just gives you an idea of size and scope, which would be conducive to that landscape. So, it would sit above. We did have to make sure we accounted for, and this was one of our homework assignments, quite frankly...Oh, sure, Mr. Murray, go ahead. Oh, we did want to make sure that we accounted for the height component, which I believe was from here, Thorndale Avenue, from the base of the sign, to the overpasses, kind of where the increase begins, right, is about 15 feet difference between South Thorndale and the start of the highway, if you were to kind of measure yourself from road, from grade. So, the sign dimensions as proposed would be unchanged from our original explanation, which is 45 feet from grade of expressway to bottom of the LED sign, which is pretty standard across kind of the country in terms of a 45-foot from highway grade. But I did want to take that back, show you the measurements, describe those measurements, that there is a 15-foot difference between South Thorndale and the top of the highway. So, just to give you an idea on dimensions, that's what we did as well, provide that clarity as well. Most of which you have seen before, all of this you have seen before. I didn't want to spend extra time, but all the other designs you've seen, and that was the original intent, you know, to complement these kind of lighter features as well. But personally, this was one of the assignments we spent time on. And I'm here to address not just the aesthetics, but I believe if there's questions on the financial component as well, or the advertisement restrictions component, I believe some people had some questions on that as well. We're here to address all of them.
Alderman Messina.
Might be a question for Brad. Is there an ability to terminate early that lease?
Mr. Murmas?
By us or by them?
I would ask that we consult the city attorney, who's going to be here next week on that one. He had mentioned a couple of different questions that may arise tonight. That wasn't one of them, so I'm not really prepared for that one.
Okay.
Are you saying?
Mayor, please.
By us terminating the lease, or?
Well, either party, right? Is there, what's the clause, is there a clause for termination? Or early termination? If they're not getting their return on investment, can they terminate early? Can, for whatever reason, if they violate some of the terms set out, can we terminate?
Yeah.
That's a question for the...
Yeah.
Good.
And then can I have a follow-up?
Sure. Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
There's been a lot of conversation amongst some of the council around content, curating the content, right?
Absolutely.
Can you, can you or somebody talk about some of that content? I know a lot of us have some strong feelings on what we hope to see and what we definitely don't want to see.
Sure. Yeah. And I think in the proposed text changes, there's two, actually, there's three barriers of comfort around that, and I'll explain each. Number one, from a text amendment standpoint, I believe you addressed that on page 10 in the back. "A community landmark sign display face may not message or advertise adult or sexually-oriented businesses or materials, hate speech, or any form of profane language, promotion of any message that would be obscene in nature." That's the section within the proposed ordinance. We had gone so far as in the development agreement that you're talking about, which outlines the financial terms, an extra level of barrier, which is describing, and I believe you had mentioned that the attorney will bring that to your attention, because we had provided a draft agreement, a draft development agreement that has extra protections in there. The third extra protection is the lease with the landowner, which is Prologis as well, right? So, as the operator, we have those protections. So, there's kind of a triple barrier to make sure that no sexually-oriented businesses, profane, hate speech, things of that nature. If there's a desire to add something, you know, please let us know, and that's very easily able to be done.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah. As I spoke with City Manager Murmas earlier about this, but yeah, one of the folks that couldn't be, or one of the Aldermen that couldn't be here, did want to make sure we were specific around no political advertisements. We'd not like to see there, religious, and anything, I think drug paraphernalia related. So, if that's something you can put in the development agreement?
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, I had heard some concerns about what you had mentioned, as well as potentially gambling as being perhaps restricted. But Attorney Bond said that he would be here next week to address those and protect us from having those be on the billboard.
Yes, one final question?
Sure. Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Last question, and then I'll sit at my hand.
No, it's quite all right.
Come on.
So, looking at the annual revenue payouts, I get it, but for my support, I'd like to see those numbers flip. So, I was hoping to see if you could under, if you could explain the rationale. I'd like to see this kind of top-loaded over that 20-year period, and if you guys are open to that, that would definitely help me feel better about this. If you'd be able to comment, or if you guys want to think about it.
So...
The way the payment schedule reads today...
Yeah, let's see. I have this on here, actually, for everybody. It might be easier to just take a look. Yeah, I got it up here. So, this is, this is the original proposal. There's two components, and we did really want to take, we did want to take that into consideration via our impact fee, because we know that a lot of municipalities, obviously including yours, from what had happened last year from a COVID-19 standpoint, it's good to make sure that a lot of this money can address this year slash next year's operating budget, right? So, what we wanted to do with an impact fee is make sure that there's a one-time $20,000 impact fee to address today's current environment, right? We wanted to make sure that was part of it. To get to the long-term financials, it does average out, as Ed mentioned, about $18,000 a year for 20 years. We did include 10% escalators in there every five years for inflation and other reasons. But again, we thought that this was something that would provide the city not just that one-time upfront help, if you would, but also a long-term financial partnership in this. And what I must say, too, is, is this, this number is very substantial as it relates to our lease with the landlord as well. So, we do, I can't stress enough that Prologis is a partner with us here and with the city, okay? So, this partnership, I know you mentioned the word lease, but our development agreement that we would have with the city, right, wouldn't be a lease in the sense that there's a lease with a landowner and an operator like what we have with Prologis. But I will tell you, this equates to about 40%, 40% of our financial commitment to Prologis. So, Prologis and us, as a partner with the city, are returning 40% of that, which is a very, very substantial number from a lease standpoint, from a revenue-sharing standpoint. Yes.
I would counter. Percentage is always good, right? 40% of how much money are you going to generate? So, without taking this further before next week, and actually going out and looking at what you guys generate on some of your financial reports, to me, 40% means nothing. I'd like to, you know, without generating, knowing what your financial amounts, like I work for a $100 billion company, 40% is peanuts, right? So, while I appreciate what you're saying, I would prefer, these are, to me, small numbers. I'm sure you're going to generate a lot more money than what I'm seeing here. We have this with a lot of other contracts, where I get it, you want to stack it so it looks attractive toward the end. I commend you for that. Rather than the escalators, I'd like to see a de-escalation over those five years.
I understand.
Excuse me, every five years.
I certainly do, and I welcome that fee, and thank you. I do want to address just two things to that, if I may. Number one, that was, we did want to bring up the impact fee as, you know, in anticipation of that. Number two is, remember, the city has a free advertising spot. Let me address that for one moment. The city has one spot out of 12. So, think of it as a CD playlist. You have one screen facing eastbound, one screen facing westbound. Each advertiser, just come up well in your head, your local cleaners, your local restaurant, right? You can fit, they're up for 10 seconds, okay? So, let's say you own cleaners, let's say you own a restaurant, let's say you own a hardware store, okay? You are up for 10 seconds, okay? The next 10 seconds, your business is up. The next 10 seconds, your business is up. Oh, wait, the next 10 seconds, the city's up, right? And that rotates throughout the day, 365 days a year. So, Alderman, what I'm trying to say is there is a very, there's an inherent value in that advertising space as well to the tune of about $24,000 a year that the city would be getting in free advertising on that one spot as well. So, there is a financial component to that. So, there's an upfront impact fee, there's a financial component with advertising, and there's also a long-term...
And like I said, I mean, just to finalize my thoughts, if you want to add numbers, I can do that, too.
Sure.
We have garbage contracts that come up and say, hey, we'll give you 1,000 garbage cans. They're worth 20 mil, you know, they're worth 500,000 in the contract. That, to me, is irrelevant. I look at what the number is to what you can potentially gain from this. And I know this is a very lucrative spot. I've been approached by other folks about that spot. This has become, for whatever reason, very public. So, you know, in order for my support, obviously, I'm one of just a few.
Sure.
I'd like to see some of those numbers shifted.
Sure.
I'm not asking for more money. I'm just asking for...
Absolutely.
The payout schedule to look different. And I appreciate, you know, what you've brought us thus far. I'm just asking for a reshuffling.
Absolutely. We can certainly consider that.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Mayor, please.
Couple things. So, at the end of 20 years, there's no more funds coming to the city, is that correct?
No, no. The way that we have it in the development agreement is, I believe, it continues on a year-to-year basis, almost like a lease renewal, right, on a year-to-year basis from the last 20-year mark, right? And also, remember, also, both parties have the ability to renegotiate at that point as well, right? The development agreement would be for that term, but then also just like a regular lease.
Right. Okay.
Yep.
My next question is, so you said 40%, but my understanding, some of these signs collect somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 a month. 15,000 would be six, 40% of 15,000 would be $6,000. Fire cry to 1,300.
This is, the 40% is of our base rent to Prologis. That is what we're paying in an annual base rent to them, yeah, contractually to them. So, then what they're doing is they're saying, wow, we want to be a partner here, and we want to contribute 40% of our rent to them, to the city. Yeah, so that's typically when, typically when these arrangements occur from a private and public partnership, it's around a 20% revenue share, if you will, or commitment share. Prologis has decided that there's a bigger lift that can occur here, obviously being the size in which they are, right, from a global standpoint.
Okay. So, I have a question. Ed, is the 20,000, is that an impact fee? Is that by code, or is that something we're just making up that number and calling it an impact fee?
It's, I believe it's something we're just calling an impact fee for want of a better description.
Okay.
It's not an actual impact fee.
So, to your point, as you're shelling out 20,000 upfront, that's not an obligation from the city, like if I build a house and I have to put up, or...
Yeah, there's a lot of ways to, to Alderman Messina's point, there's a lot of ways to slice this to where you feel the most comfortable. If it's a shift around of top to bottom, if there's an impact fee that you don't want, and you just want to bake that into a higher rev, like, there's a different, we thought the best way was, okay, today, let's help out today. Boom, one time, right? And then this is just a, like in any lease, it's a graduated step schedule. If we want to move things around through your liking, of course, we would, we would do that. Yeah.
Just add, so...
Sure.
You actually brought up a great point, as you guys look at the numbers. Personally, that, like you commented, that impact fee gets a little, it's a little sketchy, a little weird, right? There's already been some discussion. So, to me, if you guys can rebake that into some of the numbers, I just want, we are very, very, very transparent with the public. So, I, it would be kind of nice if we didn't have an impact fee, and it just was built into the annual payments, personally. That's...
That is totally the city's preference, of course.
Doesn't that defeat kind of your original concept?
Well, I still want to see it stacked, right?
So, load the 20 in the first five years?
We could do that as a payment versus a, you know, right, there's no, there's no term, right? There's, it's not like he's paying a perm fee for 20,000. It's a impact fee, where some folks may raise their eyebrows, like, oh, impact fee. Isn't Messina up for reelection? That's a great impact, impact his dollar, right? So, I just, I want to avoid all that. And however they want to stack the numbers, I just would feel more comfortable if it was part of the actual annual revenues paid out. Again, I just want six up here.
I'm sure between staff and...
They'll figure it out, right?
You guys can figure that out, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, I want to go back to the advertising. So, our community is surrounded by towns that have a lot of dispensaries. So, was the question is, we're not going to have cannabis advertising on these boards?
That is, that is, that could be the city's desire. And I'm telling you, from firsthand experience, that's not uncommon, given the new age of where we are in this country with the legalization of cannabis and shops, quite frankly. So, if that's something the city does not want on their board that says your logo and has your logo, by all means, let's add that in. Again, this is, this is your sign, right? You have a spot. You can communicate whatever you want. And if you don't want your message about your police night out fundraiser, followed by a cannabis ad, we understand that. And that's, then we write that in and make sure those protections are in place, of course. Yep.
So, any other, Mayor, please, you have another question?
So, when you said 10 seconds, is that 10 seconds per hour, every hour? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
So, Mayor, what ends up happening is it's once every minute. So, if you have that slot, your message is up once every minute, okay? Because you can fit six advertisers, each with a 10-second time window. So, you can fit six on a loop, right? You fit six on a loop. And if your loop number, if your spot number one, you're up for 10 seconds. Then you let the other five happen, then now you're in minute number two. You're up again. You let the other five happen, third minute, you're up again. And it's that way all day. So, from a, from a visibility standpoint, the city has a tremendous visibility capability here. And not to mention, Mr. Mayor, you have the ability to change that every minute if you wanted. So, if you wanted to promote something in the first quarter of the day, do it. If you wanted to hit a button and change that in the afternoon, have your message in the afternoon change, change it. Nightly fundraiser, change it, right? If you wanted to get crazy, you can change it every minute.
Right, right.
You could take your entire playlist on the clock tower and your entire playlist that's right out here, out front, and you could just put it on a loop if you wanted.
Okay. And, you know, I know we haven't spoken about designs or whatnot, but this latest one that looks like our signs kind of definitely intrigues me. I think that looks really nice.
We wanted to pay attention to even the top components, too. It's not just a boring piece of molding on the top. It has some interest to it.
And the height of that, you said, was 45 feet from the base to the top?
That's correct. So...
Okay. Not from the height, 45 feet above the highway?
45, it's 60 total, 45.
Oh, it is 60. Okay, so...
Yeah. So, from this point right here...
Right.
Which would be on Thorndale, to this point right here, would actually be 60 feet.
Okay. And then the sign on top of that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's why I thought I understood, 45 feet above the base of the highway.
That's...
Which is elevated.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yes, it's 60 feet to the top.
To the top.
To the top.
I was just ready to jump in.
It's in the ordinance, because we weren't sure where you want this.
Right.
Sometimes people want it below, but depending on what you agreed on, we didn't want to have to come back and add the changes.
That's correct.
Top of the display face, whatever you choose to leave.
And it was, in the prior update, in the prior PZB meeting, it was 45 to the top, right? But we accommodated for the grade change. That's exactly right. I apologize.
Yeah. I think that, I don't want to make a habit agreeing with you, but I think I have to agree with you. It's a nice clean, it's greater balance, it's a little stockier, doesn't appear like a flagpole with this huge flag hanging on it. I think it's better scaled, better symmetry. So, I really do like the other one. Alderman Messina, you have a question?
Ms. Ames, go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
Alderman Ames.
Thank you. So, you mentioned that where the leaf would be on the bottom, that would be illuminated. What about the city of Wooddale at the top? Is that also illuminated as well?
Absolutely. And if we can program it just as we would with the LED screen, it could be dust till dawn. I'm sorry, yes, in the evening hours, that will be illuminated. So, it wouldn't be on during the day, you wouldn't need that during the day. You can actually make the letters white, so you would see that during the day.
Go ahead.
So, for the landscaping on the bottom, and I know it's the whole area, is that part of the maintenance of Prologis or your company, or how does that maintain?
It's a great question. So, what we do, and we do do this on many properties with Prologis, is very rarely do you stick a pole in the ground and say, that's it, goodbye. There's always something aesthetic that we try to do, whether it's low-lying brush. What we don't try to do is we don't try to plant large trees, because if you plant large trees, you're going to have a problem in the future. Unlike this situation, trust me, we have a lot of situations throughout the country where we're having to do vegetation removal, which is a big expense and a big headache. This case is free and clear. So, at the bottom, I would anticipate some sort of low-lying bushes, some flowers, just to make sure it looks nice. Because remember, you have people traveling on Thorndale that's going to see, they're going to see the foot of the sign. Now, granted, they're going to see a Prologis... Now granted, they're going to see a Prologis industrial building that they're used to seeing anyway, which is not the, the best sight to see in the world any, but everybody knows it's an industrial side road, but yes, we would add some planters to make it look very nice from a base perspective.
And then, as, I'm sorry, as far as maintaining that, then, is it prologis?
Uh, yes.
Like, if it needs, you know, if it's overgrown and needs to be trimmed back-
Yep.
That'll be done, because I can see that happening over years, things start growing, they expand, and it starts looking-
A lot of times, that is, and I have to check with our lease with Prologis, I believe we have that in our lease, that, that ends up being done by the operator. So we would take on that responsibility, and that's totally fine, because we'd be taking on that responsibility with the city anyway, to help manage the advertising content, why not advertise, why not manage the vegetation piece as well? Prologis is going to cut their grass there anyway, so it's usually a, a very easy conver, there are national clients, it's a very easy conversation, are you going to cut it? Are we going to cut it? In this case, we would likely end up doing it, it's to be determined, but I believe that's in our lease with them. It, it will not be overgrown.
Okay.
This, this is an aesthetic project more than anything, and, and we pride ourselves on making these things look different than your traditional billboard. I drove by the billboard that's out there right now within the city limits, it's blank on one side, I don't know if you had the chance to drive by it, like, it's, it's hanging. It, it, there's nothing on it, there's no advertising, right, so the, the column is, is, is steel and it's kind of flaky, like, this is different. This is an aesthetic piece of art as well, that you would be proud of.
Thank you, thank you.
Alderman Currielli.
Hi, I have a question, a follow-up on the mayor's regarding frequency. You said we had one slot every, or ten-second slot every minute, is that on both sites, or both signs, or just one slot?
The city, the, good, good question, the city has one slot, so there's twelve throughout, so there's one slot for the city. However, good news, the city can change that, so not only can you change your message every minute, if you want to change the message from a visibility standpoint, you flip to the other side. If you're trying to capture commuters coming and going from the airport, depending on which way the traffic is going during the day, you flip your message to the other side to get your maximum impact. So the city has tremendous amount of flexibility, not just content, but also which side of the board to use as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sure, well, let me, I, I got a slide one in here.
Oh, go ahead, you have a?
Oh, I, I, one, one question, and then we can have the motion. So, the, been a lot of talk about how many spots and how often we can change it, and we can change it every tech second, anytime, on demand. And when we were putting up the clock tower, that was kind of some of the conversation, and then when it went up, we found out it doesn't always move on command, right? It isn't as easy as it seems to be, so could you speak to that?
How is it that that's going to work and be so easy for us?
Sure.
We're going to have a key word and-
It's a great question, and there's, and there's two pieces to that, Alderman, is, is number one, the piece you didn't even hit on in your question, is, we want to assure you that, uh, Grant, right, Grant does your social media, right? He does your videos you just put out, right, beautiful. This is, this would be a project for him and you to agree on the content, right, you agree on the content, right? From a pushing the button standpoint and managing the content that goes right to us, and we push the button, we have the, uh, electronics to push the button, right, to get it in that playlist, and once the playlist is set, the playlist operates. And we, we have that, uh, arrangement with the sign provider, with the LED provider, it's a, it's a web tool. So, you don't have to spend any more money or time, from Grant's standpoint, worrying about how to operate the thing, like you would with your clock tower, like you would with the sign out front here, but you would, if you want. You would have him or somebody else help with the content, and then we would upload the content. It, it's saving a step that he's probably doing now that maybe be a little cumbersome.
So when you, when you say content, he could, like, send you a PDA, PDF or a picture and go, this is what I want on there?
That's, that-
And scribble it out, he doesn't have to do any programming, any HTML stuff, any-
So, so, yet, yes, yes and no, not to complicate it, when, put yourself in the, in this, uh, seat of a restaurant owner or a cleaner, a person who owns the cleaners, right, they want to be on the board. Well, they don't have a marketing person, they don't have that technology available to them, they send us a PDF. We say, show us what kind of image you want of maybe some kids trying on shirts or what have you, what kind of color combo, what kind, what do you want it to say? We'll create it, we'll do it for them, and we'll put it up, you know, we'll share that with them, they approve it, we'll get it in the right specs. You, as a client, you have somebody like Grant, we send you a spec sheet. The spec sheet tells him, somebody of that computer background will know, certain DPI, certain resolution, certain kind of specs, letters can only be certain, so high, spacing, right, we give recommendations, you don't want the letters to be so small on the content, right? You want to be able to read it as you're traveling sixty-five miles an hour, those kind of things, we have kind of an introductory meeting and conversation with Grant. We give him that spec sheet, and from that day on, he just knows that, send that to us in that format, and then we, we run with it. Very easy.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Couple of things, one, we have that skill set in-house, does Grant have that skill set?
Mr. Murmurs.
Grant is highly skilled with this type of material.
Okay, so we won't have to outsource this.
Mr. Murmurs.
I believe not.
Okay, we'll wait till next week, but, grade of A, give you an A on your homework. So I, I'd like to make a motion approving, an ordinance amending the city's sign regulations in chapter thirteen of the city code to allow off-premise billboard signs in the city limits, subject to review of the annual revenue payouts and the additional advertising exclusions that we discussed, that would be my motion.
Second. Alderman Catalano.
Is there going to be any legal papers drawn up as far as advertising restrictions?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, um, yeah.
It'd be in the-
Right, I understand that, but it's going to be done before next week.
I, well, I think that they've already been working on it, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Murmurs. Mr. Murmurs?
Yeah, the attorneys have been working on it, I would note that I want to make sure we get everything that the council wants. This has been a long process for the applicant, as well as the council, and make sure we do it right, and we protect our interests and, and their rights. So, I would hesitate to say we're going to get this all done by next week, I don't want it sloppy, I don't want it rushed, so it'll probably be the following council meeting.
Okay.
Um, but we are working on it.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes, and that passes.
Welcome to Wooddale.
Thank you, gentlemen, uh, next type.
Advocate has, okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Will we be coming back to PCB subject to those items, or are those items to be reviewed upon prior to a city council?
They'll be going, Mr. Murmurs, do you want to cover that?
Sure, you would just work with attorney bond and staff, and then you would go straight to the council at the, not the next council meeting, which is next Thursday, but probably the following one.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good job, great presentation.
Next items to be considered at future meetings, Route eighty-three annexation and PUD October twenty-twenty-one, and UDO updates November twenty-twenty-one, that's enough, no other suggestions, thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.
All right, the Public Health Safety Judiciary and Ethics Committee have called order. Let the, uh, minute taker note that the same, uh, council members are still present, no additions, no deletions. Uh, the, I need a little approval of minutes from the August twelfth.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we got a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That passes then. All right, uh, we've got a couple of reports here, we're going to start with, uh, I've got my partner up there, the Chief Vesta. We're going to start with an approval of an agreement with the FGM Architects for a conceptual study of updates to the police department facility. Take it away, Chiefy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, so on your docket today is requesting approval for an agreement with FGM Architects uh, for twelve thousand dollars to complete a, uh, internal study and interview with employees and, uh, uh, looking at the current PD internal design, uh, not the entire inside, but, uh, the one half of the building that has gone through considerable changes over the last thirty years. Uh, we no longer have a radio room, we don't dispatch anymore, uh, our female locker room. Uh, while we made some adjustments to, uh, squeeze in additional personnel, our demographics have changed considerably since nineteen ninety-one, and it's tight, uh, so we might want to look at, uh, uh, some, some adjustments to that. And then, uh, even our watch commander office, uh, used to be used, uh, back when we had typewriters, and the watch commander would fill out a summary of what happened in the day, and there was reports, and that room has changed also. So, we're looking to have a FGM come in who di, designed many police stations, and, uh, just give an overall, uh, review of our current workflow, our current work areas. Uh, I don't anticipate any of this to be, uh, load-bearing structural changes, uh, but perhaps some reapportionment of some drywall and walls and, uh, and redesign, and they would complete this process within three to four months, and then we would come back to council for any approval. Uh, we do have money in the CIP for this design, uh, we, we did put twelve thousand aside. Uh, the quote went up a little bit last year from eleven-four to twelve, just another year on it. Um, and then we would come back to council for any type of, uh, future approval for, uh, budgeting of changing the design of the station.
Alderman Messina.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of an agreement with FGM Architects for a conceptual study for the updates to the police department facility, that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in the second, and a question from Alderman Woods.
Thank you. So the timing of this, we just most recently passed the new heating system for the police department, that very robust system. Um, and so we're going to alter the police department in some fashion, I don't know how much, I don't think anybody can speak for that, but is this going to cause any issues with the heating, are we going to do duplication and work, are we going to have to move something that we put in?
We did discuss that, and, uh, we did discuss that both with the heating contractor and with, uh, the design firm here, and their initial thoughts are that it would not require anything, because likely we would be replacing with additional drop ceiling, where we currently have drop ceiling. Um, and they took that into account when they, uh, designed, because the radio room area right now, which is on a separate air conditioning system,
Mm-hmm.
will now be a part of the overall system, so we actually have more of the area that's going to be controlled by this one system. So I would anticipate the possibility of being some more open spaces, um, so, you know, uh, but other than, other than that, we did talk about that they thought this wouldn't affect the HVAC design.
Yeah, just a, yeah, and, and the reason I bring it up is that there's probably going to be some tweaking, whether they agree today or not, of that, and I know that that guy, that contractor, vendor, uh, told us that there would be no extras, right, on the job, so I don't want to give them any reason to create any extras-
Correct.
On what I believe, no, I'll let that go, I just don't want any extras.
Any other questions?
Nope, understood.
All right, uh, good forward thinking on that, Chief, between the first phase and the second phase. Uh, we got a motion in the second, uh, have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that passes.
All right, the, uh, next, uh, on the agenda here is an ordinance amending chapter fourteen, article five, sections fourteen, uh, point five-one-eight and fourteen point five-one-nine of the city code regarding certain offenses. Take it away, Chiefy.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman, um, so, uh, some items in our current code were brought to our attention from the code that was written in nineteen seventy-six, uh, obviously, uh, certain court rulings and, uh, laws have changed since then, and so it was brought to our attention that, uh, our current code regarding public indecency has, well, uh, the, uh, lewd acts and some other things, but there's some reference to, uh, the type of clothes that people are wearing, which would not be applicable anymore. Um, so we're recommending on the public indecency, uh, that we still keep that as a statute, but we mirror the state law regarding, uh, exposure or sex acts that happen in public, it would still allow us to, uh, to handle things on a local ordinance if chose to, but it would eliminate any reference to type of clothing dress. And then the second, uh, removal is the reference to profanity, uh, which is not enforceable in court. Uh, if someone, uh, raises an alarm such as loud yelling and screaming, and it falls into a disorderly conduct type thing, we still have the ability to charge under disorderly conduct, but profanity is not something that we could enforce in a court of law.
Man, thank you. Why do I do that to myself? Uh, Mayor, question?
Chief, just to clarify what you just said on the last, on the profanity, so it's not like somebody could be screaming at you and swearing at you, because almost, it's almost like a threat becomes disorderly conduct, so that's where it would fall under, correct?
Correct, so let's just say two neighbors are having a dispute, and one of them ends up on the front lawn of another, yelling at them, threatening them, uh, causing a disturbance that disturbs the peace, that neighbor that's being offended to a certain level, um, they would have to sign complaints for a disorderly conduct type statute, but it's not related to what they're saying, it's, uh, the manner in which they're saying it and raising an alarm, or could arise to an assault, whatever the case may be.
In other words, they're being belligerent.
Yeah, maybe a little more than belligerent, but, uh, you know, we've got to use discretion with all those cases-
Right, right.
We have enough that can stand up in court if we-
Correct.
Arrest someone for disorderly conduct.
This then in effect now?
We currently have disorderly conduct statute, but the, the profanity, the, we're just recommending that that portion just be eliminated.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, we have a motion in the second, I think?
No, not yet.
Not yet? All right, I'll make the motion, uh-
Second.
Okay, then, uh, roll call, please?
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes, and pass the tape, please. All right, items to, uh, to be considered at future meetings, uh, right now, anything? All right, and need a motion for an adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you, Chief.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order, let the me, excuse me, minute taker note that all the same people are present. Uh, first, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last finance and, or, from the last meeting, excuse me, dated August twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Works meeting?
Yeah, wrong meeting, wrong day, August twelfth.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, uh, next up, reports and recommendations. Uh, first up, approval of revised streetlight installation policy for the city of Wooddale, uh, pass it over to, uh, Director Lane.
Thank you, Chairman, good evening, everyone. Staff was asked by the council back during budget discussions to revise the existing streetlight installation policy to take on a more proactive approach to streetlight installations. And staff feels the best way to do this, uh, in lieu of the current petition system, residents will still be allowed to petition, but in, in the absence of viable petitions, we would, uh, install streetlights on a year-by-year basis, cycling throughout the wards as we do with other maintenance programs, such as street patching, sidewalk replacement, uh, so we would go through, uh, identify a ward each year and identify an area which is unlit, and, uh, look into the logistics.
Problem, the water's coming out.
Look into the, uh, logistics of the streetlight installation in that location, and then bring it to the Public Works Committee for approval before soliciting bids for that location, and then we would follow suit in the next year in the absence of any petitions received. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee might have.
Mr. Lang?
Go ahead.
Have we looked at solar streetlights? I know I sent some information to the Green Committee.
Director Lang?
I don't recall seeing any, uh, information on solar streetlights, I know, uh, lighting for possibly the medallions, we've looked at solar options and possibly the, uh, the wind sculptures, uh, but not specifically for street lighting. I don't think it's a common practice in other municipalities, possibly for li, uh, reliability purposes, but it's something that we are always exploring, emerging technologies in all facets of public works, so it's not something that we're implementing at the moment, but possibly in the future.
I'll send you the information, I accidentally found some, they seem to be pretty good, they're being used in other municipalities. Much better than I thought they would be, there, there may be some obstacles to still overcome, but in some situations, I think they probably wouldn't be a bad alternative, so I'll send you the information, just for-
Thank you.
Alderman Ames?
Thank you. Director, so if I am a resident and I feel that my street needs an additional light, like midway through the block, so then what can I do, like, can you explain that process, how that would work?
Sure, so you would contact Public Works, and we would provide you with a petition form, and you would need to get signatures from twenty-five percent of the households along that block where you would like, uh, streetlights, then we would- Then we would send out surveys to the entire block, and if we receive a majority in the affirmative, 51% of the houses on that street, we would look into the logistics of installing streetlights and then take it out for bid.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yes. How would you determine exactly what location that light would go in? Would the homeowner have to agree to that, or is it... How does that work?
So we have the right to install infrastructure within our right-of-way. We typically space streetlights approximately 300 feet apart from each other. That's our spacing policy for street lighting. And it just, you know, it's adjusted based on where that falls in relation to people's driveways and trees and hydrants and all that fun stuff.
Follow-up?
Sorry. So what, would it be a LED light or just a standard light? I know the LEDs are much more bright.
Director Lang?
Yeah, our current fixtures are LED fixtures.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good. Alderman Catalano?
So, I'm a little confused here. So we're still going to have the policy of petitions? I mean, that's never worked in the past. I've been out to three streets already, and of course, you know, I get the signatures. And then we send the survey out, and they don't send it in. So I thought we were going to change the whole policy around and start lighting up the city.
We are going to proactively install streetlights throughout the city each year. However, if we do receive a street with the required number of petitions, that street would be prioritized in the program.
Okay. So when you say, we're not going to have no, as far as the elected officials, we're not going to have no say-so? I mean, we know our area, we know, you know, what residents want streetlights, and we're going to have some input in it?
Right, so, that's a great question, right? So who has the discretion?
Right.
The elected officials that are getting the feedback from the constituents or staff?
For the most recent streetlighting project, which we advertised for bid, it was based on a recent petition that was received. That could be an indicator, but generally the assumption is that staff will identify an area, I mean, based on certain factors, you know, an area prone to accidents, or an area of high traffic, an area in relation to a school within a ward. And then each year, we would go through each ward, try to identify an area and bring it to the Public Works Committee for approval.
Follow-up?
Yeah, we have, what, $30,000 annual for, you know, a streetlight? How many, would that just be one block, 30,000? How much does it cost?
Typically, that would be one block, yes.
Just one block?
Approximately four streetlights.
Four.
And, you know, there's something about this block grant. We don't know how much we're going to get on that, and how does that work?
Correct. Thank you, Chairman. We applied for the community development block grant funding, and our letter of intent was approved, which allows us to move on to the application process. The minimum award is 200,000, the maximum award, I believe, is 600,000. And those streetlights have to be installed in low to moderate income areas, which can be found on DuPage County's map. So we are moving on to the application process, and that project, if awarded, would take place next year, likely.
Good.
Good.
Okay. Mayor, did you have a question?
Whatever.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I wanted to touch on when you were saying that we would, the city would put them up in places where accidents are too dark or you got a lot of complaints. I know over the years, we talked about adding the accessories or amenities to a block when we did a road project or a water main or something, when we're already opening it up and taking that opportunity, whether it's putting up lights or stop signs. So we've done the signs throughout the city, so the next level would be, wouldn't that be an opportune time to put in some streetlights too and bake that into the road project?
It's an option. You know, there's instances where roads were resurfacing already had streetlights, so we would be forced to identify another area. It doesn't typically require digging up the road to install streetlights. Usually those are directionally drilled, but it is, it's an option we could pursue.
Right, I'm just saying, in the scope of the project, the guys there, I know it's not a big thing, but it's a lot easier when the road's torn up and everybody's got everything taken apart, and it can be baked into the engineering and all that stuff done at one time. I know some blocks you wouldn't do anything because they already have lights, but just as a one-off instead of just places that people complain about or too dark or we have too many accidents. Because a lot of council members are getting grief that it's too dark. I personally don't get those calls, but I know in other wards, it's a bigger issue.
Any follow-up?
I'm good.
Mayor?
Yeah, so going back to how do we pick and whatnot, just like we do the tree trimming, we're talking by wards here, right? So this is not going to become something political. Whichever one of us bothers the manager, Mr. Langmore, is going to get done first, right? We'll start in whatever ward first. So if we're tree trimming in this ward, we're not going to go with the lights, we'll give somebody else the lights, right? And something to that effect. The 30,000, honestly, if I remember right, to light up the entire city, we're looking at 2.5 to 4 million dollars or somewhere around there. So at some point, we're going to have to talk about it at budget. Maybe we need to start putting 100,000 into this line item every year and work from there. And again, we'll start with a ward, and maybe it'll be whatever the tree trimming is, two years behind, whoever's two years behind, start in that ward and...
And we'll start in Ward 2.
Of course. See what I mean?
Right after we're done with 3.
Hey, I thought it was fair, it's an even number.
Forget it.
But I think that's the way it should go, same as the tree trimming. And honestly, 30,000's not going to get it done, let's face it. Even at 100,000, do the math, at 2.5 million dollars, how long it'll take?
Strategic plan.
So...
Okay.
Just my opinion.
So do we have a motion on the floor?
Not yet.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second. Okay. Would you mind making, doing a roll call, please?
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Approval of an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Superior Road Striping, Inc. for the 2021 pavement marking program in an amount not to exceed 20,665 dollars. Director Lang?
Thank you, Chairman. This is part of our pavement preventative maintenance program to reapply some of the thermoplastic pavement markings along roads which have deteriorated. We typically target roads which are in the good-to-fair range on the street sufficiency study, and the list of locations is in your packet.
Any questions? Okay. Alderman Woods?
This is, this is just the regular white crosswalk striping. So in the past, coming out of streetscapes, we talked about the thermoplastic inlaid, the brick paver look. We've done some spots in the city, they have held up and they look good. Other people have inquired about them, why we don't do them in other locations. They look nice. Can we speak to that? Is that something we could do in the future, get into the works? It kind of fell off the radar.
So you're referring to the, like, the stamped brick crosswalks
Correct.
that are along Wooddale Road and such?
Right.
Yeah, I think we've targeted those in the main, the main areas of town, along Irving Park Road and along Wooddale Road here. If it's something that we wanted to pursue in residential areas, that would be at the direction of the council. But this is, yeah, the crosswalks, the four-inch crosswalks, the stop bars, any, you know, yellow sidelines along the roadway, that is what this program is meant to reapply.
Alderman Woods?
I would like to start looking at higher traffic areas. You're talking about the main road, and I know part of that we got a grant for, which is why we did it. But spent a lot of time researching that and putting together what was the best avenue, whether we do the brick pavers like El Crow Village, this was the most economical one. So if we could do that, like, over by the schools, like by Oak Brook, by Westview, by the junior high, there's some areas in town that would be worth doing.
There's an item in the strategic plan that we'll talk about, like major corridors. I have a fancy name already for it.
You got a fancy name?
Fancy name for my proposal, so I think that'll fit in really well, hopefully.
I'll wait till I hear the fancy name then.
Perfect.
All of them bacon.
City Manager Murmus?
I was just going to say, you stole my thunder. I was going to mention there was a similar item that could be related in strat plan and definitely doable and probably easy once we identify the spots. But there are certain roads that aren't necessarily major roads like Irving Park, Wooddale Road, but major roads like, let's say, Commercial Avenue, Central Avenue, places like that.
Great. Does it help?
Yeah, thank you.
Share Alderman Ames?
Director Lang, how long does a striping last? Like, how often is this replaced?
Typically, it's every 12 to 15 years, I would say. The thermoplastic, it's pretty durable, but once it starts getting scraped up by plows or if it's not put down properly, it can start to fade in certain areas. It's much more durable than just typical paint, but I would say 10 to 12 years it's good for.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, sorry. Do we not have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can you, roll call, please?
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Approval of change order number one to the agreement with Benchmark Construction for the Ward 2, Ward 3 Stormwater Improvement Project Contract D in an amount not to exceed 16,051 dollars. That would be my motion.
Second.
Questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Alderman Catalano?
Well, this is part of the grass, the parkway grass. Do you know the schedule on that? I know they were going to start doing it when the weather's going to get cooler, as far as some areas out there.
Yes, they've, they've applied an herbicide treatment to the parkways along Potter Street. You might notice them browning up a bit as some of the weeds die. They plan to overseed this fall as the weather cools.
Okay.
Probably within the next three weeks, I would say. And then they'll be reassessed in fall and further applications will be, or I'm sorry, spring, and further applications will be applied if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Good? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Great. And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings. Is there any? All right, then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Good job.
I'd like to call the Order of Finance Administration Committee. Let the minute taker note that the same council members are present. And I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes of August 12, 2021. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries report and recommendation, refuse and recycling and disposable service contract.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As you all know, our garbage and recycling contract is expiring at the end of April. Because this is a big project, we want to get out ahead of it and get clear direction from the council on how staff should proceed. So what we are asking tonight is whether the council would like to wait to see a proposal from Flood Brothers. They do have until the end of October to propose a five-year extension. Or would you like staff to start the RFP process now?
Yeah, I would say I would follow the contract and allow them, I would reach out to them and be proactive and go, hey, are you going to submit? I think it would benefit us, right, to see something, and then if that wasn't to our liking, then we can still competitively bid it. It gives, you know, us a second opportunity to work on a better, better deal.
I agree. Mayor?
Basically the same thing. So I know years ago, I was newly elected alderman, and we had a contract in front of us, and I did vote against it because it just was automatic increases of, I think, it averaged out to 3.8% for seven years. But these guys came in, they did save us quite a bit of money. I believe we lowered the residents a couple dollars even, and we haven't raised the garbage since the start of this contract. So I think we should give them a chance. Now, if they come in with something crazy, I'll be...
Right, we still have the opportunity.
Right. But I think we should give them a chance. So I think it could save a lot of time switching garbage cans and all that stuff again.
Alderman Messina?
I would ask, and I know I brought this to Brad before, too. I think he was working on it, but some of the events that we lost out on, like Prairie Fest, where they were going to make donations, can we figure out how that would work or how they would work through that in case this variant lingers? So as part of the last agreement we had, the last contract, for Prairie Fest, they, I believe, gave, included some of those, like, receptacles. So with us not having Prairie Fest for two years, they've kind of been able to buck that benefit, I guess you'd say. So I'd like to see how we can, you know, I'm not going to say we're going to go after and recoup that benefit, but see where we can cover our bases for next time.
Director Wilson, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I would say that we have reached out and they're open to it. We're just trying to kind of figure out what that's going to look like.
Yeah.
Trying to come up with more of a holistic approach where, like, if, heaven forbid, this continues on, like, what's that going to look like going forward? So as opposed to just a series of one-offs, trying to come up with a more of a global approach to it. So, but it's definitely something we are working and talking to them on.
Cool, thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And to clarify, we have reached out to Flood Brothers to gauge if there's interest in giving us another proposal. There is, so I do expect to see something before the end of October. And at this time, we don't really need a vote, but we are looking for some clear direction.
Thank you, Director. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I would say give staff direction to reach out to Flood according to the terms of the contract, and let's see what they have to offer as a bid upfront. If we don't like it, we always go out to bid anyway. Better to approach them early, so we still have enough time. I think Mr. Murmus touched that we have enough time to do this.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, just for some clarity, if they submit, is that initial submission foible by other vendors?
Go ahead, Director Boggy.
Yes, that would be my understanding. Proposals are in general, general foible.
Second follow-up
Go ahead.
would be then, could they, they would still be able to resubmit, though, if we decided
Would be then, could they, they would still be able to resubmit though if we decided to go out to RFP?
Go ahead.
Yes, that is part of the contract. So, if we go out to RFP, they are permitted to submit their own proposal. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Alderman Woods?
Mr. Murmus, did you have something to add to that?
I was just gonna say, once they submit the proposal, if they do submit the proposal, it's gonna be on TV.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions on that? So, do we, we need a motion or just direction?
No, just direction, I think, right?
All, all in favor, say.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Boggy. Okay, so next is Special Service Area Number 11, closeout. Director Wilson?
I've been waiting for this all day.
Your explanation for the residents, 'cause it's always, you know, what is that?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, back in 2010, the city established Special Service Area 11 for a single parcel at the northeast corner of Wooddale Road and the former Thorndale Road.